Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meetings, other than special emergency or continuing meetings, at least three working days in advance, by giving the public posting such notice on its official government website if any, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, or in the case of a public body that has no clerk at the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of a special emergency or continuing meeting shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the body of the body conducting the meeting. Ms. Tanner, has today's meeting been appropriately certified?
Yes, Madam Chair. On December 27, 2019, notice was provided fulfilling all criteria VA Code Chapter 37.
Great, thank you, Ms. Tanner. I call this meeting to order. Well, welcome, everybody. It's June. We are going to proceed with another one of our electronic meetings today. The objective of today's meeting is to have a comprehensive review of the title budgets in anticipation of approval during our July 17 meeting. And then we will have an update on the exciting graduation announcements for our seniors. And then finally, we will go into closed session to hear about some personnel items that Dr. Birdsong would like to share, and then we'll be taking a vote when we come out of our closed session. So without further ado, let me go ahead and allow Ms. Tanner to call the roll, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Birdsong for opening remarks.
Yes. Basine?
Here.
Campson?
Here.
Lantern?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Gabriel?
Here. Dr. Birdsong?
Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clayton, members of the board, and members of our community. As you know, the end of the school year is only nine days away. Each school year brings inherent challenges as well as successes. I'm certain that you would agree that the 2019-2020 school year has to rank as one of the most challenging and historic school years ever. A school year 2020, well, it's an Olympic sport, it would have to be the decathlon. If you recall, the decathlon is a 10-event competition featuring the pole vault, high jump, long jump, javelin, shot put, distance, 110-meter hurdles, 100-meter dash, 400-meter run, and the 1,500-meter run. For many superintendents across the nation, this is a timely and befitting metaphor. Collectively, we've had to make leaps into remote and virtual learning that surpassed any technological offerings we've ever delivered before. We've had to work to ensure that the services we offered were targeted and effective. We've had to jump over hurdles to continue serving students and their families, such as making sure that our students who didn't have mobile devices or internet access were accommodated. And in record time, we have had to extend our creativity so that we can celebrate our graduating seniors in a memorable and thoughtful manner through virtual graduation events. However, I can only take this metaphor so far because the Olympic Games culminate with a glorious ceremony, and then they don't take place again for another four years. Meanwhile, school divisions are still in motion. We won't have the luxury of four years to rest and train. We must continue with our work without missing a beat. As such, the administration of Norfolk Public Schools has already planned and rolled out its virtual summer program for 2020. As we've previously shared with you, the school division has launched a webpage that details those programs. Registration is underway for many of them. Please refer to the MPS website for additional information. All of our summer programs are virtual this year, and staff have done an absolutely amazing job to ensure that they will be engaging and fulfilling for our students. For example, Camp Einstein will include exciting offerings such as learning to play the keyboard in four days, and using Legos to create robots, spaceships, alien planets, and space stations. And with our focus on literacy, we have incorporated pertinent reading and writing skills into planned activities. As such, our students who will be participating in Camp Einstein will be using the creations that I previously mentioned as the focus for writing a book on what life might be like on an alien planet. Yes, the wheels of progress on the MPS bus are going round and round. But now, I would like to touch on an issue that is far more somber. As if our country weren't already reeling from this pandemic, the tragic death of George Floyd has shaken us to the core. I imagine that if schools were still physically in session in our school buildings, I am certain that our principals, teachers, and staff would be helping our students to manage their grief, extreme disappointment, and their anger. But just because school is not in session doesn't mean that we can't chalk this matter up as a fitless tragedy and then just move on. As we prepare to enter a new school year, our commitment to equity, which I believe has always been strong, has to be strengthened even more. As Nelson Mandela once said, "Education is the most powerful weapon you can use to change the world." At first, I hesitated to use this quote because I didn't want to equate education with a weapon. However, as I thought more about it, public education has traditionally had to battle ignorance, prejudice, and ill intent. As educator amongst our students, we strongly encourage diversity. Diversity of thought, diversity of opinion, and acceptance of diverse populations of people. And at the same time, we encourage our students to identify injustice. We just need to respect and love one another, period. When we systematically work to close achievement gaps, we are moving our most vulnerable students forward, giving them a sense of hope, because today's children will take us closer to becoming a world where people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. As we prepare to enter into a new school year, we must also encourage courageous conversation amongst staff and within our classrooms. In the end, public education is the most effective change agent this country will ever have. The government can change laws, but as you know, educators can change hearts and minds. So thank you for allowing me to speak on this extremely important matter. Dr. Gabriel, that concludes my remarks.
I appreciate your remarks very much, Dr. Birdsong, and I'm sure that all of us are reeling with the horrific events of the past several days and remembering the true memory of Mr. Floyd. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and now proceed then with our business meeting. Item 2.01, the title budgets. We're going to have a breakout of Title I, followed by Title II, III, and IV. And when we were in agenda planning, we discussed this to break it out into two sessions, so that way if board members had questions on Title I, because it's a larger piece of information for us to receive, that we would take questions at that time, and then we would go into the second portion of it and then take questions. One of the other items that we talked about in agenda planning was making sure that not just that board members were cognizant of time, but also presenters. And so I believe we'll go ahead and proceed now, and Ms. Tanner will be keeping time so that we can stay on topic and continue with a productive meeting. Thank you.
So thank you, Dr. Gabriel. As you stated, today we have a presentation for you. You've had an opportunity to review the proposed Title I application and budget. And Ms. Malinak, who serves as our senior director, who manages this area, she is with us today along with Dr. Cataldo, our acting deputy superintendent of academic affairs. We are happy to answer any questions. Please give us an opportunity to get through the presentation, and we will certainly make sure that we answer your questions. So without further ado, Ms. Malinak.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clayton, Dr. Birdsong, members of the board. I'm here today to present to you the Title I application in advance of the hopeful approval on June 17, and then due to the state on July 1. Ms. Tanner, if you can go to the next slide. As you know, the purpose of Title I Part A is to provide additional funds to schools and districts with high-low income enrollment. These funds can be used to supplement local funds with the expressed intent of instructional support and academic achievement. The support can be through intervention or enrichment, and can be used for school subgroups. Our focus for many years has been on the ideas that you see before you on this slide. We want to truly focus on the scientifically proven philosophy of early intervention. Our hope is that a robust preschool program and intensive targeted support in our elementary schools will help close the achievement gaps and support the goal of students reading on grade level by grade three. We know that our non-accredited schools need an additional layer of support, and this year we have intensified that focus, which I will talk about shortly. I also work closely with various departments, particularly curriculum instruction, to provide assistance in meeting their goals in each of their content areas. This includes, for example, targeted professional development for our Title I-funded staff, as well as other staff at our Title I schools. Next slide, please. Taking a big-picture look at how the funds are used will hopefully help you see this district focus in action. As you can see from the chart, 60% of the Title I funds, which is roughly $9 million of the $15 million grant, goes directly to the schools in the form of their school-level allocation. Allocation amounts are formula-driven and determined by then overall enrollment, as well as the low-income student count. After that, we have 21% of the Title I allocation, which is used for our preschool program. This includes 100% support of the Pre-K 3 program, which includes the teacher and para salary benefits, supplies, sub-funds, et cetera. It also includes very robust support for the VPI, or our Pre-K 4 program, in the form of coaching, supplies, professional development, and assessment tools. By law, we are required to have a homeless liaison, which, as you can see, is about 1% of the budget. And then another 10% of the overall allocation is what we call other school support, which includes camp young, the instructional coaches, which I'll talk about shortly, personnel and other departments such as ARA, and parental involvement, to name a few. Overall, that means that 92% of the $15 million Title I budget directly supports schools and students and our division focus. The other 8% is split between indirect cost, and then the staff in my office that manage the purchases for the schools, school-level budget and spending change support, and of course preschool, because none of us, even those of us focused mostly on Title I, none of us can get away from the daunting task of preschool. We love it. Next slide, please. Slide four here. This is just included in the presentation for informational purposes, as a comparison of each school's allocation as compared to last year, and to give you a timeline to shows when we receive the preliminary allocations, as to when we get the final allocation in the fall, and some of the reasons why there is a difference between the two. Next slide. So we have some newly proposed positions and a district initiative. In listening to the school board discuss your budget priorities this past winter, I heard a very common theme about supporting our non-accredited Title I schools even more than we do. Ms. Campson, one of the ideas that you had was to place an instructional coach into each of these locations. With the budget being passed last week and the hard-to-staff stipends not going forward, Title I used a lot of the allocation to also help with those hard-to-staff stipends. So we're going to repurpose those funds, and we are going to move forward with the idea of the 12 instructional coaches at our non-accredited schools. The curriculum instruction team will have the oversight of them in terms of their professional development, the data they will collect, and the support that they will give to the schools, but it certainly will be in the form at least in professional development, coaching, mentoring, and remediation for students in need. In the 2021 school year, we will have 32 Title I schools. In an effort to adhere to our focus, as mentioned earlier, of that early intervention, we will be exiting Northside Middle School from Title I status. The funds that would have normally been allocated to Northside will be funneled to the elementary schools, specifically those with the higher-low income percentages. But to help Northside transition, we will use stimulus funds and local funds to help them with some of the expenses that they would have previously used Title I funds for. And the last slide? Thank you. So our schools, in addition to some of the things we do at the division level, like the instructional coaches and preschool, the schools also have been planning what they would like to use their allocations for in the form of staffing. They'll get into the other expenses over the summer and into the fall, but we will, at this time, plan on having 43 Title I teachers, 25 parent liaisons, and I won't read the rest to you, but you can see that we have a very robust cadre of staff under the Title I umbrella. And with that, I am open for any questions, or if I can provide any clarification.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Malinak. Appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Smith?
Yes, Ms. Malinak, how are the allocations determined?
So the first step in the allocation process is we receive all the data from child nutrition, including their total enrollment and the, what we call, direct certification data, which helps to determine their low-income enrollment. Once we have that, or sorry, the low-income percentage, once we have that percentage, they are rank ordered by low-income percentage. And within the application, you can see, and even on that previous slide, you can see there are low-income percentages. And then from there, the application automatically assigns what we call a per-pupil expenditure, or PPE, and that formula then drives what the allocation is for the schools.
Thank you.
Ms. Basine?
Yeah, just a reminder, we have to approve these title applications, isn't that correct? And we are expected to do that when? When is the board voting on the applications?
The 17th.
On the 17th, okay. So I had carefully, you know, looked through each of the Title I applications, and what I would like to see before voting to approve them is that they are reviewed. I felt like there was some substance missing in each of the areas, particularly with the Title I budget. You know, earlier, even in Dr. Birdsong's opening statement about a focus on equity, I need to have like a better understanding of how our Title I funds are going to be used to bring about equity, just that, for students. And, you know, I feel like every year, I've brought this up in terms of enrichment and enrichment opportunities for our students, like gifted education, which when we talk about equity, that is probably one example of the inequities that exist for students in our Title I schools. And so that's something I feel like we have to figure out a way to provide these opportunities for our students, because I feel like if we don't do that upfront during the K-12, pre-K-12 years, we may be setting ourselves up for these inequities to continue as they access middle school programs, high school programs, which is, again, also referred to in the transition services in the application itself. So I think we've really got to weave in and make equity our focus, and that needs to be clearly apparent in the application, which currently, I personally do not feel that that was explicitly shared. Also, I would like to see more of how our data that we've reviewed over the past year has informed some of the decision-making regarding the positions that have been provided in the application. For instance, there's a lot in our climate survey that indicated that we needed maybe higher cultural responsiveness training PD for our teachers, as well as curriculum, also teacher mentorship. There were several areas that I felt could be brought into the application so that we are intentional in our focus and making sure that we are reaching children adequately and beyond. The other thing that you've...
Ms. Basine, your time is up. Your time is up. If we have time at the end, I will definitely come back to you, but I understand your comments, and we're going to proceed with anyone else who has questions or comments.
May I provide a little bit of response to one of the areas that Ms. Basine raised?
Yes, Ms. Malinak, you may.
Sure, I just wanted to, and this may help to alleviate any concerns, but if not, we can certainly talk later at the June meeting, June 17 meeting. But when the schools receive their allocation, the first thing they have to do is, of course, do the staffing piece because of contracts and so forth. But as they're doing that, they are looking at their data. Oftentimes, the schools will call me, I've worked with CNI a couple times about, you know, as a matter of fact, we met with one school and the whole cadre of the CNI team to talk about what do we think the school could use going forward in terms of staffing? What would benefit staffing? That science lab teacher that you see on that one slide is actually a result of that meeting that we had as a team. After that, over the summer and into the fall, the schools then use the remainder of their allocation. And as they're writing their school-wide plan, which is a requirement under Title I, they have to do a complete comprehensive needs assessment, and they're going through the data, they're looking at it from SOLs to attendance to behavior, and really deciding what do they want to do with those funds? What kind of professional development do they want to bring in or send staff out to? What experiences for field trips or in-house field trips, as we call them, assemblies for whether it's remediation or enrichment? What are the things that their needs assessment is showing that their school needs to serve the students there? And then part-time staff, do they need? We've had several schools, for example, that have hired part-time staff for the L students because they recognize some paras, for example, that may be bilingual. We also have paras that are hired specifically to work with our special education programs because that is also allowable under Title I. So the schools do a pretty good job with that needs assessment, and hopefully that clarifies a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, just a second, Ms. Basine. Are there anybody, is there anyone else who has a comment? Mr. Clayton?
All right, thank you, Dr. Gabriel. I just wanted to clarify, I understand what Ms. Basine's asking in regards to her vote for the 17th. Dr. Birdsong, would we have an opportunity, if we had additional questions, to do a two-by-two or to get additional information leading up to the 17th?
Sure.
And in regards to, we had two-by-two in the data, you've actually, it sounded like you answered the question for me regarding the data-driven, regarding the numbers that you're presenting to us. The other thing, too, Dr. Birdsong, with the unique situation that we're in right now, from the Department of Education, from federal, as well as from the Virginia Department of Education, as far as our standards of learning, and of course, I think this year we moved into a new accreditation process, that this is a very unique time, and I know that we're going to be working on making sure that our students start losing over the summer, and as well as looking at some initiatives, I guess, the strategies in the fall to ensure that our kids are getting back on track, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, those are just my two points here. I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to answer all questions. I don't have any personal problems. I've looked at the application, I think it's pretty solid based on the information that I've seen, and I look forward to being able to take appropriate action on the 17th. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I have a comment. The clock wasn't restarted, and the time had run out when I was speaking and Mrs. Malinak was answering my question. So if, not that I agree with this format, but if this is what we're going to do, we gotta keep a close eye on the clock. Also, it continues to run when the staff is speaking, which doesn't truly allow board members the allotted time.
Thank you. We're working on trying to make sure that every board member has the opportunity to share their thoughts, and then to also give the appropriate amount of time for a staff response. Okay. All right. Now, Ms. Campson?
Thank you. I'd just like to add a couple points. As a longtime principal who managed my own school's Title I budget, and as the person who was staffed to come in to central office to try and get Title I back together after the $6 million incident, what I'd like to make everyone aware of is, what caused that problem was not adhering to the rules of Title I. You don't get to just think about what you want and things that you'd like to do, because all that does is you put it in, and the State Department kicks it back. It takes a while for that to happen, and the time goes by, and then you put in something else, and that's not quite what you're supposed to or allowed to do under Title I. We don't get to decide that. The federal government decides it, and the state manages it, and it gets kicked back again. And time slides by, and you miss your deadlines. And everyone knows how I feel about deadlines, and so does the federal government and the State Department. And so that's what happened with the $6 million, was because people decided, well, why don't we, why don't we put, this would be good? Why don't we create this position? Or this will be good? Why don't we bring this in? Or why don't we let Title I money handle this need that we have? And those weren't things that Title I was meant for. And so just keep that in mind. And when I look through this budget, I look through it with an eye toward getting as much money into the high-poverty schools as possible. And I was pleased to see that one of the middle schools has been taken off, and that there is a plan in place to perhaps, you know, 35% is all you need to be in Title I here, and we need to push that back up. And I have talked to the superintendent, and I find her very receptive to my suggestions that we start getting more money back into the high-poverty schools. Now that we have our baseline of support, every school has a full-time, every elementary school has a full-time reading and math specialist, which is the universal support that we should have, and now we need to take this money, and we need to apply it to our high-poverty schools, which, and I kept asking for this with our last superintendent, who told me we couldn't do that, but I know that we can narrow it down. So so many schools are not Title I, and therefore, the money is spread so thin that our high-poverty schools do not get the amount that they need to do, and that Title I was intended to do. And so if we kind of keep that in mind as we go, with our vision on getting more money into the high-poverty schools where it belongs, then I think, and for academics, which is what Title I is for. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. Okay, all right. Mr. Jordan?
Just in terms of the timer focus, I know we're having a work session of the board, you know, part of the benefit of that is having the board be able to discuss some things and not just have a Q&amp;A with our staff. I appreciate the two-by-two opportunities, but it still doesn't give the opportunity for the board to discuss things that we need to discuss. So I took time to review things. I'm going to ask, if my time runs out, that time be allotted to continue. I think the spirit of what Dr. Birdsong opened our meeting up requires us to really take the time to look at issues of equity and the role of education, so I would ask that we be as permissive as needed so that we can have these discussions and address this important matter. I did review the application that was provided. First, maybe I'll just go through in comments, and we can come back later. So in the first section, Section 107, I'm sorry, Section 101, there was a reference to long-term subs. And I just want to get some clarity on, is our goal to have highly qualified teachers in our high-poverty schools and our Title I schools, or are we still anticipating long-term subs being disproportionately assigned to some of our most challenged schools? In Section 107, it was asking us about data, and it was a reference to data shows, but I really didn't see where the data was being articulated. In Section 121, it asked us to describe our partnerships. I didn't really see where we did a description of those. We listed them, but I didn't see a description. Section 134, I thought, could use more depth. Section 143, when we were dealing with our goals, I wanted to make sure that the goals that were established align with the school board's accountability plan. I wasn't sure if we were meeting that, because there are more goals that the board has put forward. I wasn't sure if we were meeting that because there are more goals that the board has put forward in terms of our monitoring of progress beyond just SOL scores. In Section 105, when we were dealing with family engagement, some of those items seem to be, you know, old, normal items, you know? The idea that a parent comes in, sits in the building, signs a log, and that's what we try. I think we need to look at outcomes, that outputs don't necessarily mean outcomes. There's a reference to parents' teacher conferences. I think our calendar has minimized the official parent-teacher conference day. So I think we need to get more details in terms of how we're going to support parent-teacher conferences in our Title I schools. In Section 161, it addresses best practices, but I didn't, really didn't see any best practices listed. So I just want to get a sense of best practices such as. Section 164.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm just letting you know, I have a few more, so if you.
Okay, but Mr. Jordan, hold on a second.
I'm just letting you know, if time is allotted at the end, I have a few more and I'd like to have opportunity to finish if time allows. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So let me just say this, for the benefit of all who are here and for all who are watching, we agreed as a board to receive information on the Friday before a board meeting. That means that each and every one of us had in hand the presentation and the opportunity in order to review it and bring to Dr. Birdsong any questions or concerns that we have. Our job as the board is mission and vision focused. We have priorities. We are not here to go through each individual piece of the title budget and then dictate to Dr. Birdsong what it is that we feel needs to be there. That is her job. And so what I would just say is, Mr. Jordan, I, I really appreciate all the time and effort that you have put into reviewing the application. I personally am very comfortable with the application myself. I think it would be the respectful thing to do if you had all of these questions, that you brought it to Dr. Birdsong's attention. I know that's what Ms. Campson had done. When she had questions, she went ahead and met. So that way, this is turning into your personal Q and A and it's not fair to the rest of the board. And so I would just say, our decision at hand is, do we agree or not agree with the title budget one that has been presented to the board? And I value our discussion. I value different questions and ideas that members of the board have. But this cannot be an opportunity for individual members to just go down and share items that really have no end, end intention in mind. So that being said, I'm not going to allow further time beyond. You should get to your point. And if you cannot get to your point, then we're just going to have to come, we have to be respectful for everybody's time. Okay.
That's not your call.
Yeah, that's not your call to make.
Well, I, I'm not going to get. Guys, guys, here's the, here's the thing. Dr. Birdsong had the information put on board docs on the Friday before. I value each and every one of yours opinion and discussion. We each gave, we in fact gave extra time allocated for the discussion today. And instead of the two minutes, we did three minutes. We cannot go about having long meetings. And then that question then becomes, are we meeting to perform operations of the school division? Or are we meeting in order to be a board of the school division? That's really what it comes down to. We have to let Dr. Birdsong link and we have to continue to give the mission and the vision. And I think that if we can do that, that will bring us to a better point of discussion. Okay? So.
I have 21 seconds left. Could I make a quick 21-second remark?
Yes, you may, Ms. Campson.
This is a grant application. It is not a strategic plan. It's not an accountability plan. It is a grant application. What was done is they answered the questions that the grant asked. The grant does not ask you to list every single strategy that you use in every single program that you do. It is a grant application.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. We are going to move on. If time is allocated in the second portion, then we will come back. But we are moving on to Title II budget. Dr. Birdsong?
Okay. So we have also prepared the Title II, III, and IV budgets. And Dr. Cataldo will walk you through that information and detail what's in both of those three or all of those three areas. So, Dr. Cataldo, please move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong. Just wanted to talk about Titles II, III, and IV today. We go through the application process similar to Title I and submit that before the July 1 deadline. Going through the, the different applications or the different title grants. Title II, I'm on that second slide there. Title II Part A, its main goal is to increase student academic achievement. And it does this by providing professional development opportunities to our teachers and our principals. Many people refer to Title II as TPT, kind of teacher-principal training. And we provide that training to our teachers and our principals. And, and our award amount is $1,564,000, $116.08. So the award there has been pretty consistent over the last couple of years. Some of the things we do more specifically in Title II, of course, we have that teacher-principal training, as I had just mentioned. We also do fund reading and some other reading and math specialists, actually seven of them, to allow them to be in more schools. We also fund content specialists, some class size reduction teachers as well with primarily in our elementary schools. And we have response to intervention teacher specialists as well as a professional development coordinator. And we do also provide some funding for a budget technician that works really on all the Title II, III, and IV grants. It's not a full-time, but it's a, it's a part-time position. Then in Title II Part A, the same title, we also spend money for our teacher mentors and our principal mentors, as well as stipends for curriculum writing over the summer. And we anticipate using a lot of that money this summer as we are preparing for probably one of two or three different scenarios for the fall, depending on how things continue this summer. We also do pay for substitutes for professional development. So if a teacher is going on professional development, we do pay for a substitute to be there in the classroom so that does not come out of the, the school division, the school's specific allocation amount. Professional development, in buildings, conferences, and training is also provided. And we do have a private school set aside, so 8% of the funds that do come into us go to the private schools. And we have to manage that, meaning we have to go through and approve their, their budget. So with the large number of private schools in the area, that can be a little time-consuming as well. Title III goes into language instruction for limited English proficient, proficient and immigrant students. So basically, for our English learners, we're looking to provide them proficiency in English to meet state and academic standards. Our award amount is $101,848.12. And primarily, the areas that we look for in Title III, I think that's the next slide. We look at professional development opportunities, as mentioned before. Supplementary materials to support instruction. We do have a great summer enrichment program, working hand-in-hand with our summer school for students. We do also parent engagement projects. We've had several of those projects this past year, last year, and last summer. And we plan to have those as well again, bringing other communities, community agencies into these engagement projects. So families can go kind of like a one-stop shopping. They can go to a one-school and get resources from the medical community and, and housing and, and all different areas. And then also, of course, we do part-time teachers for any supplemental services that we provide Ls. And there is again, an 8% set aside for that particular funding that goes to the private schools. Then the last one is Title IV Part A. This is, this is a newer one. It just really started a few years ago. And this is for student support and also academic enrichment. So here we have academic enrichment for students. There's three basic areas that this funding will provide money toward. Anything that provides students with a more well-rounded education. So think of our AP tests and paying for tests that the AP students will take to ensure that we have equity there and students are not limited to take an AP class based on the, maybe the funding or money that they would have at home. Also, improve school conditions with a safe and healthy environment. We've had some presentations by Ms. Mack, who has talked about our bullying and suicide prevention, our websites. All that funding comes from this Title IV. And then also to improve technology and to improve student digital literacy. And that's going to be a large focus. I think a larger focus this upcoming year too, in that area because of the, the strong push for kind of being more and more in a technological world as we move into education with that. Our award amount in Title IV Part A is $1,133,895.71. And again, as I had mentioned before, some of the things we do, provide costs to or provide money toward is student test fees for AP. We have a transition specialist, the transition students that are going from maybe a more restrictive environment, you know, something similar to either Madison or if they're transitioning into our schools. We have the safe school specials, as I had mentioned before, Ms. Mack. And then, of course, there is a required private school set aside for that particular awards itself. And then, and really that's, those are our three grants and they provide funding to all of our students, potentially all of our teachers and principals. And that's the presentation. If you have any questions, I can answer for you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cataldo. Questions? Mr. Jordan?
So I think part of the role of the school board is to help set some goals and then try to assess some of the work against those goals. In the Title II application, I have several questions as well, but I will try to give some focus to some areas. There was a section, I think it was 175, was dealing again with long-term subs and high-poverty schools and hard-to-staff schools. And I know Ms. Malinick also touched on hard-to-staff schools and stipends in her presentation. Can you clarify or offer a little more explanation as to what is being proposed to be addressed in terms of long-term subs in our high-poverty schools and what we are doing in terms of hard-to-staff? I thought I saw some reference to trying to put new and veteran teachers in place before some others. I just want to know if you could give some clarity on that in terms of the Title II application.
Yes, I can. Because we in the past have had a higher number of long-term subs working in our schools and our schools not really having completely properly licensed and endorsed teachers due to shortage of teachers, we have been providing our long-term subs with professional development as well. We want to treat them as regular teachers. We know that they're in the classrooms day in and day out. So in the past, money has not gone to a long-term sub. So you would only get really professional development if you were a teacher. So what we've done is we've kind of turned that and said, these are our regular teachers and they may be in there for the rest of the year. And we need to treat them and provide them that, that level of professional development. That normally funds are not allowable for long-term subs over a certified teacher. So that's what we try to do is provide that level of support to them.
Is there something that?
Mr. Jordan?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan. Go ahead. Kind of respond to that. You know, certainly our goal is to have 100% of our schools completely staffed with fully licensed teachers. That is our goal and that will always continue to be our goal. But the reality of the situation is, is that there may be some long-term subs that we end up, end up having to secure to provide classroom instruction for our teachers. And if they are going to be with us for quite some time, certainly the goal being to fill those positions with highly qualified, fully licensed teachers, we want them to have the benefit of the professional development. And so that's why that, that piece is placed into the application so we can provide some financial support for getting them the PD that they need. And again, our goal is not to fill positions with long-term subs. That is absolutely not our goal. Our goal is to have a fully licensed teacher in the classroom on the first day of school for all kids.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification because I was trying to understand if we were, or if what was being recommended is that as part of the hiring process and placement process, that we were prioritizing these schools to make sure that they didn't have any long-term subs. And if we did have long-term subs, then it would be at schools that had different support systems than what we know we have at these schools.
Thank you. Other questions for the Title II, III, and IV presentation? Ms. Bassin?
Yeah, so in the Title I application, there was an indication that the private school participation, if, that this division participated in bypass. Number one, I'd like to understand what that means because it looked like we were checked off as no. But then in the Title II application, I think between Title, Title II through IV, we have almost $1.5 million going to private schools. Can you explain what, what that means?
Yes. Bypass is generally, you're supposed to, with the title grants, provide money to your private schools as well. So Titles II, III, and IV, we do that. But in Title I, and I think Ms. Malinick could probably have more detail specifically because that is something we cannot do in Titles II, III, and IV. I have talked to the state about that. They do not allow us to do bypass anything other than the Title I right now. And I believe because of the large amounts of money in Title I and also the, the process of determining. Remember, Title I is for Title I schools that fit a certain category. Titles II, III, and IV basically are for all teachers, all students. And so that also would include, include all private schools as well. So we don't have that ability to do the bypass.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Malinick, did you have something?
I was just going to say the bypass, we're one of just a handful of districts in the state that participate in it. And it's much like Dr. Cataldo said, because our allocation is so large. Because the manpower it would take to, to figure out which private schools we might have a student from a Title I school attending and not just in Norfolk, this would be across the area. They contract with a company that works with these larger districts and they provide those equitable services to the private schools via what money they take off the top before they give us our allocation. So those students are still served, they're just served through this contracted company.
Okay. And is that something that you all feel that in our legislative session, that we have any, anything that we can do about that?
No, I'm actually happy to participate because I don't, we would have to hire several people to just manage the private school money. And, and, and I know Dr. Cataldo can speak upon how much work that is on a small grant. I can't even imagine on a $15 million grant. So what they, and what they end up doing is any money that's left over that they pulled off the top at the end of the first year of the grant, any money that was not used for the private schools is returned to the divisions. And so we usually every year get sort of a chunk of money back from unspent bypass funds. And then we use that for some of the different initiatives like technology, software programs, and we're upgrading technology in our schools. So we.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Malinick. Other questions?
Dr. Gabriel?
Mr. Clayton?
Okay. And, and is it two minutes? Well, what I was literally going to do is yield the remainder of my time because I had any questions to Ms. Bassin or Mr. Jordan if they had additional.
Okay.
Can we pause time? Mr. Jordan? Can we pause time? Mr. Jordan?
If you'd be willing to, to do so.
May it afford to six to you.
Thank you. Uh, and I'll try not to take all of it. The other item I was looking at in, uh, the Title IV, and I also think the Title II, I think it was Title IV, was a lot of, um, uh, comments about AP testing and gaps in data. Are we doing some things in these applications that's going to focus on, um, identifying what the subgroup gaps are and how we would work towards closing the subgroup gaps? They seem to be overarching in terms of AP, but I didn't see much in there that was showing targeted efforts around the subgroups, which is something that we've, uh, given attention to in the board's accountability plan.
Yes, with the subgroups and, and well, looking at AP testing in general, um, the NIMZI grant that we received, um, that a couple of years ago, and now we're going to be branching our other schools. So all of our high schools will be part of the NIMZI grant uh, process. Uh, they have done a lot of work in determining what the needs are of students and subgroups uh, within those schools. And what we've been able to do is provide again, some supplementary funds, uh, to really address um, the needs of our students that, um, that can't, many times cannot afford that test. Uh, in local school divisions around the area, uh, that AP tests is over a hundred dollars. And that's what they charge. Each student pays for, uh, every test they take. Uh, they're taking three quarters, that's three hundred dollars. For us, the first test they take is free. Uh, the second test is fifteen dollars and every test after that is fifteen. So we, uh, we do look at, um, those subgroups and the NIMZI, uh, process, it's really, uh, it's a wonderful process of really building up of the schools, not even just the high schools, but looking at middle schools as well. And trying to beef up, uh, the, um, training of teachers to, uh, ensure that students, by the time they get to high school in eleventh and twelfth grade and they take an AP class, that they are very prepared for that class and for the test. So, um, we've been looking at that data to, to ensure that all of the, uh, area subgroups are, are covered in there. But NIMZI does help out a lot and we just help supplement that as well with our, um, title, Title Brands and Title IV.
Thank you. I'm still, I'm still working on the timing thing in terms of what time we get and what time you all get. And I'm gonna write all these things up and I'll just send them to you. But the other question in, uh, one sixty-one, sixty-one, there was a reference to the technology dealing with twenty-first century skills. And I noticed that there was some reference to technology for North Public Schools and reference to computer science courses for, um, uh, private schools. So I just want to know if you could elaborate a little on exactly what we're doing in terms of use of technology in the Title IV grant and, you know, versus what I see the private schools doing in terms of giving some focus to computer science classes.
Yeah, it's actually, it's a little different because since we get the initial award, if you get over thirty thousand dollars in Title IV, you can only spend fifteen percent of your funds on technology. If you're getting less than thirty thousand dollars, for example, our private schools, many of them get less than thirty thousand dollars each. They can spend all of their Title IV money on technology. So that's something we have to do. We actually have to go through and each of those three categories that I had mentioned to you. We have to allocate a certain percentage in each of those three categories. Again, uh, enrichment for students, the student safety part, uh, as well as that technology piece. So we can only spend about fifteen percent. So what we've been doing with the technology piece is we have been, um, really looking at how we can bring uh, materials. We've purchased carts and things like that for students and schools that, uh, potentially if they are non-Title I schools, they would not be able to afford those devices. And we've been able to provide them some support as well, individual schools and programs. And, uh, for example, at Booker T. Washington, uh, we, uh, a Mac lab that we were able to, uh, to, uh, to get, uh, for them for a lot of their, uh, courses they'd be taking and some of the art courses as well. So that's an area. But again, it's a, it's a limited amount of money, uh, and a percentage of the overall that we're allowed to spend on that. But private schools can do whatever they want. They have latitude.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cattaldo. Okay. Um, we're gonna go, thank you very much. Um, did anyone else have any questions regarding the Title II, III, or IV grants? Okay. Um, thank you very much, Dr. Birdsong. Um, I'm comfortable with the information that's been provided to us um, with regarding to the grant. And again, I would, um, encourage my colleagues that if you have further questions, please, you may reach out. We will be scheduled to take a vote on these items on June seventeenth. The next item on our agenda is our graduation update. Dr. Birdsong?
Good afternoon again. Um, we're excited to, um, be able to provide some inter- information to you about our celebration of our wonderful seniors. They have worked so hard for thirteen years and we wanted to make sure that we celebrated them in a memorable, thoughtful way. And Mr. Coleman is going to be, uh, providing some of that information to you. I had my own experience today with my own daughter, my own child who's a senior, and they had a, a drive-by, uh, celebration as a part of, you know, what they will be doing to celebrate seniors. And, and I, I tell you, it was really surreal as a parent to experience that. It, it's just, you know, during this pandemic, these, the teachers and the building principals, they, they have really stepped up to make sure that our children remember this day, that it's a special day. And, um, I could not be more thankful for, you know, all of the teachers, all of the building principals and all the hard work that, that is going into celebrating our wonderful seniors. So Mr. Coleman is gonna be with us. Um, he's already here. So Mr. Coleman, if you don't mind, share the information about what we have planned for our seniors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. And good evening, uh, uh, Dr. Gabriel and Mr. Clayton, board members, and, uh, Dr. Birdsong. Uh, Ms. Tanner, if you'll put up the, um, PowerPoint, uh, presentation. What you will find is a, a different kind of graduation this year. Uh, certainly not what we would, uh, prefer. However, it is going to be unique and our seniors this year are going to be blazing a new trail in terms of how, uh, creative we can be with graduation while at the same time honoring our, our traditions that we have for a graduation ceremony. So next slide, please. All of our graduations are going to be streamed on Channel forty-seven and through the, the school division's website on the original scheduled dates and times bound on the school division's calendar. So even from, you know, the beginning of the school year, when we announced when graduations would take place, we are going to hold to those dates and times. Next slide, please. All the traditional components will be a part of the ceremony. So at this point, caps and gowns have been distributed to students. Most of our students have them already. Um, they've either gotten them directly from the vendor or they've picked them up from their high school as, as a drive-through. Um, but the students themselves are ready to, uh, partake in the graduation itself. Ceremony segments have been pre-recorded and are being edited together for a final presentation. As you heard, Dr. Birdsong, uh, she's also had to, uh, pre-record, uh, her segment in terms of certifying our graduates. And we've also had all of our graduation speakers in as well. Our graduation speakers were pre-recorded in the studio. In fact, the studio where Ms. Tanner is right now, and you can see the, uh, uh, Norfolk Public Schools, uh, symbol, you know, behind her. Uh, that will still be a part of our normal graduation as it would be if it were at the Chortway Arena. Uh, while they were in the studio, the appropriate social distancing and wearing of masks unless they were speaking was taking place. We made sure that we followed all of the health guidelines and the governor's orders, um, as we, uh, conducted these, uh, pre-recordings. Each student's photo and name is presented on a slide when the senior's name is called, recognizing the graduate. So at the time, we would normally have the student walking across the stage to pick up their diploma. We will still have that process and that's when the students, uh, picture their name and their, uh, name will be called by school personnel. So maybe one of the positives is every family should be able to hear their child's name called this year. Um, however, I do suspect that across, uh, our city, you'll hear bits of roars, uh, coming from households across the city. We certainly hope so. Ms. Tanner, next slide, please. Our graduates are being encouraged through communications from the schools, uh, to wear their graduation cap and gown at, while at home with the family, watching and participating in the ceremony. They will have moments where we will ask them to participate. Once the ceremony is over, reruns of the ceremony will be posted on the NPS YouTube channel. Uh, and it will be available just as it normally would be. When speaking about the ceremony itself, when I say all of those components will be in place, you know, there will be the recessional, there will be the processional, there will be the ROTC presenting the colors. There will be the, uh, playing of the national anthem. So all of the traditional things that you would find in your program for graduation will still be a part of this graduation ceremony, only virtually. Also, in addition, because, uh, everyone will be participating essentially from home, uh, we have what are called padlets, special webpages that have been created for each high school to allow for shout-outs and post-celebratory comments, videos, and photos for the class of 2020. Um, how to access these pages is posted on the division's website, um, the school's website, and also in a letter that was sent home to parents. So hopefully what we're going to see is that during the ceremony itself, uh, people will be able to go to the padlets, they'll be able to congratulate their child. They might be, uh, you know, give a, a shout-out for a particular group of students. Uh, they can post a picture of their graduate if they want, and all of that will be, um, monitored but also displayed as part of the graduation ceremony itself. Next slide, please. Once graduation is completed, and that's just around the corner, that's Monday and Tuesday of this next week, we also have some post-graduation events. And so the first one is the school graduation experience that we're calling it. And this is where each high school will be hosting a special event where graduates will be able to come pick up their diplomas and a graduation program commemorating the ceremony. This will take place next week on Thursday and Friday, June eleventh and twelfth. Uh, each student will have the graduation, uh, picture taken with their diploma, just as if they would if they were in line at the ceremony itself. They get the picture before they come up on stage. They will still have that opportunity, um, at the school itself. Students are scheduled though for a time window to come, come to the school, uh, for their opportunity to participate. You can't have everybody at the same time, obviously. This will allow for the appropriate social distancing and keeping everyone's health in mind while still celebrating our graduates. Next slide, please. Once that's completed, we are asking our students, uh, or encouraging our students to take photos in their cap and gown with their or without their diploma at landmarks or other different places of interest within the city of Norfolk. We're asking them to then send them to NPS so that we can place them in a video montage called Salute to Seniors. And that Salute to Seniors then will be posted on the NPS YouTube channel beginning the week of June twenty-second. So we're hoping that our graduates, uh, once they leave the school after picking up their diploma, since they already have their cap and gown, they'll maybe go out to a, a particular landmark that's important to them or a, a photo opportunity with the family, uh, and the graduate in, at landmarks across the city. And that we can put that together and that would be another way to honor our graduates. So the Norfolk Public Schools class of 2020 is literally, virtually the best class ever. Next slide, please. So how did we do it? I've got just a few photos to share with you. This is the awesome crew of the Channel forty-seven folks, and this is the, uh, the, the command center for when we did the taping. And we did the taping this last week as well as a little bit this week. Next slide, please. And I've got to tell you that, that Channel forty-seven's, uh, staff are, have been absolutely awesome. So this is an example. This is the studio. This is the Booker T. Washington group that came in. Uh, you can see they're wearing their masks, they're social distancing as well, and they're basically doing the, uh, the setup for uh, the start of giving their speeches. Next slide. Here's Norview High School. Next slide. Granby High School. Next slide. Lake Taylor High School. Next slide. And Wari High School. And so you'll notice that we've maintained the proper social distancing. Our students were very, very cooperative in terms of wearing their, their masks, except when they can't come up to the podium. And when they come up to the podium to speak or give their speeches, they took their masks off for that. I can tell you right now, just as a teaser, the absolute, the, the speakers and speeches that our Valsals are giving are absolutely awesome. You're going to, uh, you're gonna have to wait for them, but you're, you're gonna be excited and they are on point. Um, they're very in tune with what's going on. Next slide, please. So now it's your opportunity for any questions that you might have around, uh, our graduation ceremony and our activities.
Ms. Campson?
What a great job. Congratulations on what you did, Mr. Coleman. Very, very impressive. And also just want to take a second to say, we sure are gonna miss you next year.
Well, so this isn't a graduation I thought I'd have going out, but, uh, I, I have to tell you that, you know, it's the Channel forty-seven folks. It's our school principals, uh, and administration that have really pulled together to, to make this graduation happen the way it's going to be. I have been fortunate to be a part of the process.
It's amazing what y'all have accomplished. It's gonna be wonderful, the children, for the children and the parents. Thank you so much.
Educators will always find a way.
True, very true.
Others, others with questions or comments? Mr. Clayton?
Again, I just wanted to echo what, um, Ms. Campson stated. Um, I've participated and then watched some of the national things that were going on, LeBron James that put on and so forth, um, for this class, very unique. Um, but I do want to commend the staff and, um, Dr. Birdsong and Mr. Coleman, John, we are gonna miss you. Uh, congratulations on that, the next journey for you. Um, but giving something to our students who worked so hard for thirteen years and, and, you know, you get hit with the pandemic and, you know, everyone's trying to figure this out. But I think that we have taken, uh, is that, is that what, say, on a buck beyond, um, and then some to ensure that and honestly, some things I think that in the future we could still maintain, uh, for some future classes, taking photos and being able to share. So I think that there's some things that we can take out of this and continue for classes to, uh, for graduates to make. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to share any comments? Mr. Jordan?
Uh, also want to congratulate, uh, the one for working so hard on making this happen. I think my question may be more for Dr. Birdsong, more of an aside, uh, from a question I received from a parent slash community member. With the, at the school level, when, uh, schools are having their, or if they're having their traditional moving up ceremonies and crossover ceremonies, is there something being done with that across the district? Or is that a school-by-school piece? What should a parent do if they are trying to, excuse me, get an understanding of any virtual moving on type ceremonies?
Uh, so the elementary principals as a group decided that they wanted to do something that was uniform. So all of the elementary schools, you will find that their moving on ceremony to middle school is going to be somewhat the same. So, um, yes, but the middle school, uh, principals, the middle children decided that they didn't want, they didn't want to have something as uniform as the elementary schools. So if you're, if there's a parent with a question, I would strongly recommend that the parent reach out to their building principal for details.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bassine?
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Coleman, thank you for the great work, uh, that you've done, uh, to put this, put these graduations on and also huge shout-out to all the principals and teachers uh, for the tireless efforts over the, not just to put these graduations on, but for, for everything, uh, during this whole, uh, school closure period. Um, I do have a question and I apologize if I missed this, but how will, uh, graduations occur for open campus, uh, Madison, you know, some of our other programs, uh, who are, who will? for Open Campus, Madison, you know, some of our other programs who will also have graduating seniors? Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. They would be like any other year. The Open Campus students and any students that finished the year at Madison, if they were graduates, would be a part of their zone schools' graduation. So their names would be called, and they would be a part of their zone schools' graduation. And we do have some graduates from both programs.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else with comments? Ms. Smith.
Dr. Birdsong, just want to congratulate you and your staff on such a wonderful program for our seniors. I know when this pandemic started, a lot of parents, as well as students, were really concerned about graduation and what that would look like for them, and you and your staff have definitely provided our community with something that they can remember and cherish for a long time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I do appreciate that. Thank you. And this may be Ms. Coleman's last official presentation, and I want to publicly thank him for all that he's done for Norfolk Public Schools. Mr. Coleman has truly been a joy to work with. He's always very thoughtful, he's been a calm presence for a lot of us when we tend to be a little hyped about things. He knows how to bring things back down. Mr. Coleman, you're really going to be missed, and certainly, if you want to stay another year or two, feel free to do that.
I can always be reached by phone. However, I will be out on the boat and spending time with my grandkids, and so my days are already hooking up quite quickly. However, I do want to thank NPS and everyone I've been able to work with over these last years. It's been a wonderful opportunity to work for Norfolk Public Schools. It's been, quite frankly, one of the highlights of my career. I've built a lot of strong, positive relationships with people here that I've really enjoyed working with, and I will miss you folks as much as I hope some of you miss the work that I've been able to do. I certainly hope that I've been a positive influence, and, you know, I'm going to miss it. But I've really worked with a lot of good people, so again, when you even talk about, you know, this graduation ceremony, it wasn't me, it was a collaborative effort among a lot of people, from the Channel 47 people to the communications people to Deb Rock and her efforts, to Arlene Faren, my secretary, the high school principals, the administration. This is not a one-person, you know, type of event. It takes a lot of people to come together, including Dr. Cataldo and Bruce Brady, I mean, I could go on and on. Everybody just has had had a hand in this ceremony that you're going to see this next week, and I couldn't be any prouder of the people that I've been able to work with. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Truly wonderful. Dr. Birdsong and team, I will echo the sentiments of, sentiments of my colleagues. You have done a phenomenal job of putting together a very memorable experience for our graduating seniors. I know that they appreciate it, but I'm sure that their parents appreciate it even more, and our community has a lot to be proud of. I thoroughly enjoy the videos highlighting some of our seniors. Our senior class just gets more and more impressive every year. Their TBAs are well beyond fours. I'm so proud of them, and I would just say to all of the graduating seniors, to remember to reflect on this moment, it is an odd moment, but this is one that they will never forget. It's so interesting and unique, but I think it will make them stronger individuals, and they'll be able to go back and say, well, I was the graduating class of 2020 that graduated virtually. And yes, they definitely could be the, virtually the best class ever. Not the class of 1998, right, Carlos? But certainly, for the graduating seniors, just remember that a lot of thoughtful consideration has been given to making sure that not only as you walk across the stage that you're well-prepared, but the thought process takes place when you start with Norfolk Public Schools. If you're lucky to come in in pre-K, that's wonderful. If you started in kindergarten, every teacher, every principal, every support person, every administrator cares deeply, and especially the board. That's why we do what we do, to see you walk across that stage with a big smile on your face, ready to go out into the world, and ready to be ready to be competitive against any other person that's out there. And so we wish them the very best. I'm very proud of our school board representatives, too, and I know we'll be doing something special for them at our next meeting. So I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that has gone into this presentation, Dr. Birdsong, and what we'll go ahead and do then is have a motion to enter into closed session.
Madam Chair, I move that we enter into closed session.
Seconded. Okay. It's moved and seconded. Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the motion.
Yes. Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for. A discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees, et cetera, of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session will be the personnel docket of this day and a disciplinary matter concerning a specific employee. B, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of this session are briefing by the staff and consultation with counsel concerning the matters identified above. C.
Nay, and I'm voting no because I have asked to have an opportunity to have.
Oh, so hold on, Ms. Basine, hold on one second, hold on a second, hold on, Ms. Basine, hold on. What we can do is we are, once there is a motion and a second, and Ms. Tanner has read the motion, we can go into discussion. So let me allow you to properly go into discussion because it is your right to do so. So let me, let me, let's frame our discussion then, so that way you can, when she calls for the roll, you can answer appropriately. So Ms. Tanner, if you could please allow Ms. Basine, and we'll go into discussion about going into closed session, two minutes. Ms. Basine, please proceed.
One second, Ms. Basine, we want to give you the correct time, just one moment. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I would like, I know it's been asked, and if we could have a moment as we do the, after we do the roll call, to have an opportunity to adopt the agenda, and also have an opportunity for board members, should they have items that they would like addressed, to perhaps do that so that we can all either discuss or reach some sort of consensus that that's an item that is important to all of us? I know I can email, and I have done so, as you all know, over, about several topics that I would, you know, have had questions around, including, you know, the status of of different aspects of our school division during this closure, plans for the summer, as well as plans for reopening, understanding that this is all a work in progress. And so, and I have asked for that, to have a standing topic on our response during this pandemic, to be a standing topic on our agenda. And so I would like for the board to have an opportunity to weigh in and come to some sort of an agreement so that we know what to look forward to in the upcoming meetings.
Okay, thank you. Any other items for discussion as it pertains to going into closed session? Okay, Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll.
Okay. Basine.
Nay.
Campson.
Yes.
Clanton.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Martin. Smith.
The points that Ms. Basine brings up are very valid and should be taken into consideration, and I'm going to support her and say no.
Gabriel.
Yes. All right, everyone, you have your, you have a link to go into closed session, so we'll come out of this meeting and we'll enter into closed session. Ready? Okay. I'd like to have a motion to come out of closed session.
I move to come out of closed session.
Mr. Clanton, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Adele got it first.
Ms. Martin? Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine.
Aye.
Campson.
Yes.
Clanton.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye, thank you.
Resolution.
Dr. Gabriel.
Yes, go ahead.
Without objection, I'd like to change the adjournment time to seven o'clock, no later than seven. It's 6:47 now.
I'm fine with that. I don't have an objection. We can change that. Okay, Ms. Tanner, we're going to proceed with three motions. Oh, you need to come, you need to read the motion to coming out of closed session. Let's do that first.
Yes. A resolution certify an executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative voted, recorded vote, and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk, the such closed meeting was conducted in the conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk.
And we did vote. Unless anybody wants to vote again, we'll just, we'll just say that the vote that we had just taken counts. Okay. I'd like to have a motion on the floor to accept Personnel Matter A.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept Personnel Matter A.
Any further discussion? A second? Ms. Martin, any further discussion?
So we're voting, when you say we're, the motion was to accept.
Yes.
That means accepted as it was proposed.
Exactly.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Just wanted to vote like I thought.
I know, I know, it's a little, a little off of what we're, what we traditionally do.
So every item we vote on here is an item to keep, keep it as it was.
It's always been a mercy, most of it's always could have been an affirmative, never a negative.
Well, and you think I would know that as many as I, as many as I pulled off myself.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine.
Nay.
Nay? Okay, Campson.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Smith.
No.
Gabriel.
Aye. Motion carries. Can I have a motion on the floor to accept Personnel Matters B, C, and D as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept Position Personnel Matters B, C, and D as presented.
Second, is there a second?
Second. Hold up our hands.
Okay, Ms. Campson, second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Attorney Cloud again.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just, Attorney Cloud, can you just explain again that, that in terms of our policies, that if we have existing policies on the books, that they, can you just explain that our existing pauses on the book are in effect and when they're not in effect in terms of actions of the, of the board?
I'm not sure I entirely understand your question. With regard to this vote, these matters, these are, these are a series of recommendations the superintendent with regard to senior positions that are no different than have been made in years past by other superintendents and on our other board chairs, including you. And they are all subject to a vote and a decision based on the will of the board as expressed by majority. And I don't think that there is any policy that with regard to any of these votes that you're preparing to take would prohibit or prevent the vote from going forward today.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion items before we vote? Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine.
Nay.
Campson.
Yes.
Clanton.
Aye.
Jordan.
Nay.
Martin. Martin.
Aye. Am I on mute?
No.
You thought you were frozen.
Might have been a computer delay.
Yeah. Smith.
No.
Gabriel.
Aye. The motion carries. Can I have a motion on the floor to accept the remainder of the personnel docket and the remainder of the supplemental docket?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the remainder of the supplemental and the personal docket as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine.
Aye.
Yes.
Clanton.
Yay.
Jordan.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye. Thank you very much. That concludes the Voting Matters.
I just want to make sure, because I know, I think I said yay. Did you record that as yes?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner, thank you. All right, my brain's kind of.
And the motion does carry. So that concludes our voting items for the agenda today. Our next meeting time will be June the 17th, and I, again, would like to wish all of our graduates the best, to their families, to the staff. May they enjoy their virtual graduation, and thanks again to the staff who made this a extra memorable moment for them. Everyone be safe, stay healthy, and we'll see you June 17th. Thank you.
Bye, guys.